I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education for the School District of Bearaboo to order for Monday, January the 28th, 2013. Your role call, Mr. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. Mcnevin.
Here.
Mr. Mearing.
Here.
Mr. Mortimer.
Here.
Ms. Riley.
Here.
Mr. Bedro is in Lake and Bodak here. Continuing with the pledge. Flashlight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion for the approval of the Board of Education minutes of January the 14th.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mearing, submitted by Riley, and a discussion. Hearing none, those in favor please signify by saying a "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes approved.
Mary Hall, please stand.
Noting the abstention of Mr. Cummings. Previous to correspondence of which I have none. Any other board members with correspondence? Administrative correspondence?
I have a thank you from the Sauk Prairie administrative team. They spent two days in our district doing instructional rounds in our classrooms, elementary through high school. They learned a lot from the teachers and the school leaders and they feel more confident sharing the practice of serving, teaching, and learning. Lori helped to coordinate political visits and explain the important work that our district and team is doing to strengthen the Bearaboo schools. They left inspired with the hope that their districts, that our districts will work more together in the future. So, again, that's, we've had several districts make requests to come in and observe classroom construction and I also appreciate the classroom teachers being open to that process as well. So, thank you Lori to the teachers.
Any other correspondence? Hearing none brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled Public Viewpoints. Do we have anybody here tonight for public viewpoints? Any public viewpoints? Any public viewpoints? Hearing and hearing none, I'd like to move on to the staff and student recognition. We have Jane and Cassie with us tonight along with a couple of students, Kyle and I go.
It looks like Anoop is not here at the moment, so I'm not sure if they're running late.
Do you want to do it maybe after?
Let's, um, how do we get started, I think? And we want to start with introducing Kyle.
All right, first of all, I just, am I supposed to talk?
You pick the floor.
Okay. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you everyone for having me and I would like to introduce Kyle Adams, who is a fourth grader at East Elementary. He is in Becky Rondio's classroom. At the beginning of the school year, we had the opportunity to meet his classroom teacher, the principal, school guidance counselor as well, and myself. And we came up with ways how we can challenge Kyle in the classroom and especially in the area of math and we came up with some goals and learning targets for him. And Kyle, because of that, is being, is doing successful in the classroom. He has math contracts. He also is differentiated in the area of reading and writing and his writing drafts that he has produced has grown tremendously this school year and it's mainly due to his teacher Becky as well. So Kyle.
Well, I feel that I'm being more challenged and also I think that I'm getting more out of this year than I was throughout the last few years.
Good job Kyle, good job.
I'm Karen Adams, I'm Kyle's mother and I just wanted to add that in addition to his academic acceleration, his behavior level, not only at school but at home, has significantly increased and his level of maturity has improved quite a bit also. And I feel that's due to his being challenged at school. Thank you.
All right, well, I spoke with Anoop today and I spoke with his mother yesterday, so I'm not sure what came up exactly. But they were planning and hoping and looking forward to being here and I know that they may show up yet and I hope to give them a chance to talk about the opportunities that Anoop has taken advantage of this year. He was, I'm Jay McMahon, by the way, gifted and talented coach at Jack Young Middle School. And he was one of the first students that we worked with identifying him early on as being a student who was in need of intervention in that he really needed additional challenges. And so we have him on a really unique schedule where he's getting a double dip of science and math and taking classes at the middle school and at the high school. And he's also taking advantage of Wicked E online learning in lieu of a language arts class at the middle school. And the Wicked E online learning is through Wisconsin Council of Academically Talented Youth.
Yes.
And here he is, fantastic. I'll let him tell you a little bit about that. Anoop, we're saying fabulous things about you. And so, so he's taking advantage of some, of some really unique opportunities. And I'm going to put you on the spot a minute here. Anoop, do you mind sharing a little bit of your experiences this year?
Okay, um, well.
So this is Anoop, Sandra Chikar.
Hi. I'm in eighth grade and I'm coming here to the high school to take a few classes, algebra two and biology. And I'm also doing a course online, Wicked E. It's, um, I already finished one, I'm doing another one now. It's about genetics and biotechnology. But the last class I took was on history. It was called Building an Empire. So we looked at empires, civilizations through history and like found the weaknesses things.
All right.
Anoop, how does this, uh, being, you know, online class or coming to the high school, how, do you feel less connected to your classmates at the middle school? Or is this in challenging environment keep you stimulated and?
Keep you stimulated.
And doesn't hurt your friendships, you know?
What grade are you in?
I'm in.
And Suma, did you want to address it?
Yeah.
All right. This is Mrs. Suma Chandra to share a little.
Hi, first I want to thank Ms. McMahon and both the principals, high school and the middle school principals. And they, I asked for McMahon about how we challenged the kids in school and she made an arrangement with, meeting with all the teachers and then we kind of decided what we needed to do for him to challenge him. So, and then again, we met with the high school principals and teachers and GT coordinators and everybody and then they reshuffled the timings for him. And as he already told you, he's taking geometry in middle school and algebra two in high school. And they gave a permission for him for being 10 minutes late to go to the middle school and attend the math class. And he's really coping good with both the classes in high school and the middle school and I really thank the middle school and Lori for doing all those things. I wish we can see these kind of things in elementary schools too because being a mother, I personally think, you know, we need to give a good foundation in the elementary school level. I know in the high school and the middle school, they are coming with the challenges. I would appreciate if, you know, Lori Miller can take a little bit more in elementary school grade two. So I really appreciate that.
Has Anoop been doing this since the beginning of the school year?
Oh, no, actually we moved from a different state when he was in sixth grade. That time, yeah, in math, he did, as a sixth grader, he went to the seventh grade math. And for seventh grade math, he went to the eighth grade math. And, you know, he was staying in the eighth grade this year too with the same teacher. And then it's hard for the teachers, you know, because each kid have a different level of teaching. So I was, you know, he took his ACT and SAT by his own outside the school and then after looking at the grade and I thought maybe, you know, he need a little bit more challenge. So we kind of went from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Should we move in?
Just a little bit.
Okay.
Should we move in?
If we could have the parents and students stay here for just a little longer as the teachers present.
Okay, so again, I'm Jay McMahon. I'm the GT coach at Jack Young Middle School. And I've taught here in the district for 23 years and eighth grade language arts mostly, but seventh, eighth, and ninth grade and advise a number of different clubs. And I'm a huge baseball fan and there's a saying in baseball about having something put right in your wheelhouse, which means you can, you have an opportunity just to hit it out of the park. And I feel like in taking this role on, I felt like, I feel like Lori and Crystal and the board really put this GT position right in my wheelhouse and I feel like as a building, we're hitting it out of the park. And I, it's so exciting and invigorating for me as an educator and, and I just, and I can't wait to show you some of the things. And I don't have a lot of time, so. I can do that, it can take a half an hour. Okay, so you have a little handout and I just want to refer to this and I just want to start by saying, you know, when I talk about having it put in the wheelhouse, first of all, after being given the role of GT coach, Lori came to us and let us have input in how to put the policy together, what the policy would look like. And she had a lot of it in place already, but we certainly were able to add and make it our own. And the policy, if you ever had a chance to look at it, it's online on the district website. It's very, very thorough and is, it's just a terrific thing to have online for parents to have access to, for educators to have access to, parent, you know, across the board. It's a terrific policy, I think. Also, as a GT coach, the expectations for me were clearly set. This is what I expect of you. Here are some suggestions, month by month, what your position might look like. Here are professional development, professional development opportunities. Now, go. And I have never felt so set up for success before as, as a leader within the building. And so, it's been exciting in that regard. So, the first sheet here that I have for you is the RTI model, which I'm sure you've all seen before. And I just want to touch on this briefly. I feel like my job as GT coach is to be at the table and present at discussions, making sure that when we talk about response to intervention or response to instruction, that we're looking at that right-hand side of that diamond and that we're looking at the needs of our advanced learners as well as the needs of our students who, who are on the other side. So, that's my role, to make sure that I'm at the table and considering the needs of those advanced learners. If you turn the page, on the top half, I've listed current programming, things that we're doing now. And a lot of this wasn't in place last year. And it's so exciting for me just to look back and be able to share with you what it is that we're actually doing. We're identifying students and it doesn't mean labeling them. In fact, I bold-faced and put in italics, it's about learning, not labels. And sometimes I'll have parents call and say, I want my child tested to be in the gifted and talented program. And I have to back them up a little bit and say, okay, you know, we do have a gifted and talented policy, but it's really about learning. And my first question is, do you feel like your child's being appropriately challenged academically, first of all? Because we have a lot of data already and we can identify students who are advanced learners. But the big question becomes, are they being appropriately challenged? Especially if they're in the 98th or 99th percentile, then we probably want to hold what's called the DEP meeting so that we can meet with the parent, the child, teachers, Lori, and see, you know, do we need some special programming to meet the needs of this particular student? And, and then thanks to John and the teachers in my building, they've been tremendously flexible and have allowed for some really flexible programming with our advanced learners. So, so we have an identification process. We've done a lot of things in the realm of curriculum and instruction. We're really working on improving differentiation. It's, it's such a buzzword and it's, it's so important and it's so difficult, differentiating. But we're, we're coming along and I think we need more professional development as a staff, but we're really improving in that area. We need to make sure our core curriculum is solid and we've done a lot of work in that area this year. We're doing clustering. Science is really exploring flipping classrooms. We have the DEPs. With the strong technology department that we have and the Google trainers, we're really building the tech skills of our teachers. And so, we're being able to do more with 21st century learning that really fits the needs of our advanced learners well. We have Wicked E online learning. We brought that back to the district through Lori this year. We had done it years ago. We have it again. We have five kids currently programmed through Wicked E classes in grades six, seven, and eight.
Could you elaborate on Wicked E? I, I know what it is, but I just make sure that everybody including the audience knows what Wicked E is.
You bet. It's, no, no problem. Uh, Wicked E is a, is a program through the UW-Madison out of their education department. It's called Wisconsin Council of Academically Talented Youth. Retired professors teach the courses. They're very, very rigorous and have pretty high demands of, of time and output from students. There are three face-to-face sessions in Madison every quarter that they go to. So it's kind of a combined online face-to-face meeting setup. Enrichment, just about everything listed there is new this year. I left some things out that we've done forever, but would also fall under that enrichment like science club and forensics. And we're doing subject area acceleration and grade level acceleration. Really exciting things that previously we didn't really have the flexibility to do. So, had some lots of things. On the bottom, I put some future considerations. We've been really working a lot to ease the transition for our advanced learners. The GT coaches in all of the buildings, Cassie and myself, Scott Lotzy here at the high school, all the elementary teachers. We have a shared coaches website where we have all of the students that we've been working with holding DEPs on, listed by graduation date. So, when Anoop goes to the high school next year, the information that I've gathered on him, Scott Lotzy already has and will have access to so that, you know, we can make that transition easier for our advanced learners. So, that's exciting. So, a lot, we're doing a lot of neat things. I'll let you read through those, I won't read them for you. The back page, I just included a list, this is from a, a book called RTI for Gifted Students. And this is something that I just take a look at every now and again. And when I look at it, you know, if I were to look at this last year, I would not have been able to check most of these. And this year, I would say that, you know, a lot of these, we are really addressing. And I have already fielded phone calls in the past week. In fact, parents who have heard the buzz of what's happening here in our district and are interested in pursuing enrollment for their child here next year. So, really exciting. I'm just excited to see what we're able to provide for our advanced learners. And really appreciate the opportunity to act in the capacity that I'm acting in. So, I'll take questions. Yes?
Thank you. And I apologize for being late. Anoop, Anoop, may I ask you a question?
Yeah.
And, and do you have opportunity to share your understanding as a peer counselor, as a peer facilitator, to groups of students that might benefit from what you understand and the way in which you might be able to explain to your peers how to understand something the way that you do? And I, I believe that's a fundamental part of, of our educational objective is to create opportunities where our young people have opportunities to teach other young people. And I, I would hope that would be a part of our, of our, of our program. So, Anoop, do you have opportunities?
Yeah.
Would you be interested in opportunities?
Um, yes, I would. Yeah, in math, I would, at the high and the middle school with Mrs. Logan. I'm always like jumping around helping the kids and they need help in understanding math concepts.
And do you feel that, do you feel that as something valuable?
Yeah.
For your own education?
It makes sure that you know the concept yourself.
And if you don't know, then you discover what you don't know by trying to teach it to someone else. Thank you very much.
We also have Cassie here to share a little bit about our.
Just one question for Jane.
Sure.
Jane, as I said, I mean, we, we always use the term gifted and again, that's a very, I mean, it's hard, you know, sometimes to say you're gifted, not gifted, or whatever. I'm looking at a lot of these programs and I'm saying, yeah, these programs would be good for gifted, but many of these programs are going to be good for many of these students regardless of where they are in, in the academic areas. So, do you think this program is going to really impact maybe many, if not all, students in a lot of places?
Absolutely. And a, and a lot of these programs are, a lot of the enrichment activities are available to all students. Many of them are. Some of the, you know, some of the things like grade level advancement, subject level advancement, you know, probably unique to really the top 2% who are in need of something.
Sure.
Above and beyond. But I think, you know, the point you bring up really, I think what's really, really important is that we look at our core curriculum. Because I hear that question a lot, you know, I see these things happening for students with special needs. I see things happening for students who are advanced learners. What about the ones in the middle? And I think that is where we absolutely have to make, you know, make sure as a district that there is rigor and relevance in that core curriculum and that teachers have the skills, the, the professional development that they need to really be able to differentiate within those core classes. And, and if we're doing that, then all students should be appropriately challenged.
Okay, good. And it's really about breaking down barriers, self-creative barriers in many cases in which, you know, in an institution, sometimes you struggle with, you know, the concept of individualized education. But I can't think of anything that's more worthy of personalization than kids' education. And, you know, we're in the process of breaking down barriers and, you know, charting new waters, you know, it's fantastic. And I want to thank Jane because I know she's been real aggressive and, but real, real sound in terms of, you know, planning programs for kids that really cater to their individual needs. Great, thanks.
Yeah, you bet.
All right, I will try to remain as calm as Jane does.
Cause you just fake it till you make it.
Exactly. I think they're on face though, it kind of gives it away. First of all, I'm Cassie Kramer and I teach fifth grade at East Elementary. I'm also the gifted and talented coach for my building. It is my second year with the Bearaboo School District and I love it here. I've been to many other school districts and there's not one like ours. It's a very strong district. Anyways, I wanted to highlight some of the positive impacts that I've seen with having a gifted and talented coach within our building. So first of all, I just want to say that my main job as a gifted and talented coach is to advocate for all students and that I want to make sure that students' academic needs are being met within their classroom. So that was the case with Kyle, is that I helped advocate for him and I helped ensure that he was being challenged in the room. And Becky and I communicate on a regular basis and kind of swap ideas back and forth as well as his mom. And so that is just one example of how I would advocate for students. Also, I think it's nice that our school district has a contact person so that if parents feel like their students need to be challenged more in given areas, they can contact me. And then I can set those meetings up with the classroom teacher and with Lori or the principal or whoever needs to be involved. I know that a lot of parents have really liked that. Also, I serve as a resource for teachers. Every time where we meet as gifted and talented coach, Lori's giving us more resources to take back to our buildings and share with teachers. And I've also gone to several trainings this school year that has helped me in my role as a gifted and talented coach. At our school, we are going to have coaches, or we are having coach, coaching sessions for teachers after school. And one of them will be focused on gifted and talented and I'm going to focus mainly on differentiation and like Jane said, enhancing our core instruction. Also, the gifted and talented coaches on the elementary level have, we've coordinated academic activities. Last week, we went to a spelling bee in Reesburg with other area schools and Aleah Whitrock, a fifth grader at East Elementary, won second place. And then we are doing some math challenge activities as well as writing activities and hopefully there will be more to come as we continue our role as gifted and talented coaches. So ultimately, I want to thank everyone for this opportunity. I think the teachers truly value the importance of a gifted and talented coach within the building. I don't always have the answers, but I know where to find them. So, thank you for having me again.
If I could have Kyle and Anoop up here? We have, on behalf of the school board and the Bearaboo School District, we have a medallion, honors for excellence, for the success that you've demonstrated with your academic achievements so far and hearing about how you're helping other school, other students in our district and you're kind of paving the way for us because we're going to learn what you're really successful at and what's working for you and we're going to make it even better for other students. So, I think, he's trying to get a picture here of the two of you here. Rather get your faces in your backs, but here, let's shake hands. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Okay. Thank you, Jane. Thank you parents for your involvement and for advocating for your students and working well with our staff too. That's so important to do and we hope that you continue to do that and provide good feedback for us so that we can continue to do a better job. And Jane and Cassie, I was teasing Jane before we started and I said, this is kind of like the Globe Award or SAG Awards. Only I don't have a big trophy or a statue. I do have a certificate of appreciation and you've talked to the board before and, you know, these two, two ladies, step up here Cassie, have taken on additional responsibilities. They're already busy ass classroom teachers, but they feel that leadership is important and they certainly are providing that support for our teachers. And even though we don't have Becky talking tonight, I want to recognize Becky Rondio in the audience too, teacher at East School, and she was working with gifted and talented students before we were even talking about gifted and talented. And so, we appreciate the support that you've provided to your students for a number of years. So, congratulations. Jane, who's been here 23 years and Cassie, two years? Yep, and so we have lots of leadership opportunities for all teachers here. So, congratulations.
Thank you. We're a little bit out of order on the agenda that, if you, if you can, if you can do this for improvement, which tied into the staffing, food and nutrition. So we're going to do reports now and before we get into the shuttle bus, I'm being, it's not on the agenda, but I would like to afford an opportunity to talk briefly about the state convention while expressing the lines of those who attended. And I, I want to first say that I had the opportunity and the honor to watch our staff present a leadership session. It was entitled Building District Capacity to Maximize Student Learning, something that the board had previously seen. Lori and Danny did an awesome job. Gave part too much credit to the board for what happened. You know, there were a number of sessions that happened from all kinds of different categories and some of them had 10, 15 people, sometimes 20, sometimes 30. You guys had 100 headers and you had people stay around to the point that we were interfering with the next session because they wanted to ask more questions. So it was, it was awesome. And I understand you get to present again for.
OSA in June and I think may end up being, if Lori can have her way, it'll be a four-hour session. Free conference, so we're really excited to share and highlight things that are happening here in Bearaboo to build capacity. So, yeah, we're very proud of the way that they represented Bearaboo School District.
Well, and your, your part in the, in the preparation doesn't go unnoticed either, so thank you. You guys did an awesome job.
Thank you. They are going to be presenting to the district leadership team first day later in February and if any board member wants to sit in and watch that presentation, you're more than welcome. I'll give details to you and if we have a number of board members.
And if we have a number of board members, we'll just post it as a morning service.
Awesome. So that was the highlight of my attendance. I would like to ask more if she has any, mean your first convention, if you have any. I know you're kind of off the cuff here because it wasn't on the agenda, but I just while expression especially wanted to recognize the session in particular.
Well, unfortunately, I was unable to hear Danny and Lori's session because I was honored to serve as the delegate for the Bear Booth School District at the delegate meeting. And that was a very new and informative experience for me. There were 335 board members from across the state looking at policy. And they have, you know, a format where resolutions are brought forward, resolutions been prepared ahead of time by a committee. And then they are moved for, moved for and seconded for discussion. Discussion takes place and then a vote takes place. They had hoped to be able to use electronic vote counters, but that didn't work. And Doug warned me that that was unlikely to work. They tried. There were a number of items, resolutions to be discussed, really very few that I thought were controversial or that the group found controversial. They were ways to continue to improve schools, to continue to move toward more transparency, to cover economic shortfalls, the kind of things that we talk about every, at every meeting. These are the same issues we see being faced by districts statewide, large and small. Of course, some larger districts have their own set of challenges and smaller districts have some real challenges. And so I learned a lot and met a lot of people, you know, board members who I was able then to, because this takes place, this meeting takes place on Wednesday afternoon, I able to discuss topics with them throughout the, throughout the several days following. So it was, I did get to hear the governor speak on Friday and I think it's been covered pretty well by the media. He did promise that in the next budget, there would be additional funds for schools, both under, funds that would be made available to schools that were hurting or school challenged, schools that were finding challenges and schools that were doing well. And, but also general funds would be increased as well, which of course brought the crowd to its feet with applause. And so, so it was, I really suggest, actually recommend to board members to attend these, this annual meeting. There was just so much energy and so much information. It was hard to choose which sessions to go to and I had wished that Lori's and Danny's would have been repeated on a second day. I'm sure they would have been ready to do it twice, but no, you're going to do it twice. The energy and the, and the resources that were made available by vendors, open for discussion, lots of, lots of discussion about the 21st century classroom and technologies. It was really an exciting place to be and I felt that a number of the sessions and, and the discussions that I was able to have with people during lunch periods or downtimes really made me a more effective board member. So thanks for sending me.
Thank you for covering the delegate assembly right there.
Yeah, yeah. It was very good fun.
Okay. Brings us to the portion of the agenda and the shuttle bus updates. So with that, I move to turn to Martha.
Sure. So as you remember, we started offering shuttles from Ave and East to the middle school, high school drop off. And that was based on weeks that we had prepared throughout the district. So we had been tracking the ridership every day in the morning and in the afternoon on both routes. And for the first two weeks, we were, in the morning, we were about 30 total on both buses and in the afternoon, about 40 total on both buses. Our registration was actually probably about twice that high, but those were the actual numbers we were seeing. So last Monday, we decided to consolidate the routes. So I believe it stops at Ave first and then goes to East. We called all the parents, so everyone knew. And so we consolidated the two shuttles into one shuttle. On the flip side of that, I also let the board know that when we started this in early January, we were adding two shuttle buses, but we were also reducing routes by two due to some rearrangement of routes throughout the district. Since that email has gone out, we've had to add one of those special enroutes back. But now that we've consolidated to one, it should be enough effective in our budget. So that's our intention.
Okay. Thank you. Bring us to agenda item seven, which is the personnel recommendations. And they are all the ones that have action items tonight, which would be the new hire, reduction in contract and a contract overload. They are all interrelated with online. Online program.
I did place a letter from Rhonda in front of each of you asking for that reduction bonus.
I moved to approve all three. Second.
Motion by McDevon, seconded by Mr. Bedro. Any discussion?
The net is really in the overall zero position.
Yeah, and we did a revision with the overload. Craig, do you want to address that?
Yes, the, there are two types of overload language in this context in the employee handbook. There's one if an employee exceeds three preparation periods, three types of classes. And in this case, the individual is going to take the overload, will have four preparations. So for that, he receives a certain stipend and then Bill could explain this better than I could, but if you have six classes each, each first and second semester, then you receive an additional stipend. So this gentleman's going to be receiving both of those. Is that accurate?
So I, I mentioned a reduction of 9,766 with that additional overload we're looking at still savings of 6,500, even though it's beyond the one FTE that we originally started with.
Some of that's because of benefit reductions, probably a large portion of it's going to.
Yeah, and you know, this is a temporary solution.
Sure.
To the school year, obviously, we would like to come back to the board once we've framed what that position might look like between middle school and high school. And ask for permission to post.
Sure. Do we need to make a motion on that?
Yeah, Bill, did you want to add anything about the way, Bill worked very hard to try to put all these pieces together to make this work through this year. And we were anticipating this. The good news is that Rhonda will be in a leadership role at the state level and will still be working with our own teachers coordinator.
I think, I think it's been well summarized. It's just, you know, this is kind of a way to get us to the end of school year and we need to take a further examination of Lori and Crystal and, you know, talk about what we want, what's the future of online learning going to look like. We'll have some sort of idea once we do middle school registration here and that should start to clean itself out here in the next couple of weeks. And then be able to really assess what that position needs to look like in the board. So, but we, I want to thank, you know, Gabe Cedarburg and Tim Burges for their flexibility and willingness to rearrange their current schedules to take on different courses, you know, two weeks into an existing semester to make this work. Otherwise, we'd be really struggling right now to find a way to make it effective for all students.
Mr. McDevon, would you amend your motion to add the posting for that position?
Well, we actually, we'll wait and come back with that because we may want to have some discussion with the board on what that looks like to make sure that we're including the needs of the middle school.
Yeah, we're going to bring it back for review and then.
Further questions or concerns on the motion you did on the floor? Hearing none of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to the consent agenda, which is the approval of the December receipts and disbursements. And for that, I turn to the chair of finance, Mr. McDevon.
Finance committee moved and met and reviewed the receipts and dispersment and it's still will be approval. Second.
Motion by McDevon, seconded by Cummings. Any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Brings us to new business, the first of which is the drawing for the ballot order of the names in the spring election. And because my name is on there, I'd like to have Board VP, Mr. Mearing.
Actually, by statute, the board's clerk.
He can hold the box at my point.
I'm the official boss. I know how to do this.
So to be clear, the first, the first name is the first name on the ballot, the first name you draw?
Right. Kevin Borde. That's the word.
Well, I hope we got one. We better move this.
All right, thank you. Brings us to the business, the approval of the 2013-2014 calendar that was sent to in graph form. Any motion? So. Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Just to reiterate that the development of the calendar included input from all of our teachers, from our staff, from our administrators, that the process that this board had laid out with the leadership of the school has been implemented.
Any further discussion? Hearing none of those in favor of the approval of the 2013-2014 school calendar as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Brings us to C, which is the determination of class sizes for open enrollment applicants. The board received the 2013-2014 open enrollment spaces. And I have to be honest, I'm not really sure what we're supposed to do, so we.
Danny, have you gone on highlighted or?
By statute, under the new open enrollment laws, by February 1st each year, the school board has to set the number of open enrollment spaces that will be available for the following school year. And so what you have before you is our, at this point, our best projection as to how many students we feel we would be able to accept into the district under open enrollment. Again, this is looking at, based upon our current enrollment, looking at also average enrollment at the 4K level and then projecting those enrollments forward. Obviously, this can fluctuate greatly between now and the start of school next year, so we will certainly take that into consideration as we get open enrollment applications requesting to come into the district. So you see before you what we are recommending in terms of the number of spaces that we would designate as available per grade level. And you can see that both at some of our elementary grades as well as our middle school and even at 10th grade at the high school, we are at capacity in some cases. So again, it's going to vary depending on what we start the school year with for open or for student enrollment. But by law, we, the board has to approve this by February 1st of each year, so.
Danny, would you put a hard copy of that in my mailbox, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. You're going to have.
I do have more.
Thank you.
Yeah, the questions I have, and again, I think a lot of this discussion or consideration is, I understand where we are for this, but we're looking at facilities. Is it just that we just don't have the space enough in some buildings?
Exactly.
And, and so, and I'm curious, like with the grade nine through 12, there's a big gap from, it's just because the enrollment is that large in 10, but I mean, so we're only saying 300. Let's say we did get a lot of people in ninth, wouldn't, there would be obviously a place to do it, but let's say we got a bunch of people in the 10th grade to open enroll. Looks like we've got a lot of space in ninth grade. Why wouldn't we be able to cover if we were to get, let's say, 320 in 10th grade? Because the ninth grade has all this extra gap. Maybe Bill could answer that question, I don't know, but what are we looking at? Why, I couldn't say I'm going to take more students in 10th grade. We'll have a huge number.
Sure. No, that's a great question then. What, one of the things we take into consideration too is looking at those core required classes that students need to take at the high school level. So looking at what students would be required to take at the 10th grade, we have looked, one of the things we take into consideration is class sizes at that level. And so even though it appears as though at a ninth grade or even 11th and 12th grade, we could take in so many more students at the 10th grade level based on the classes that each 10th grader is required to take in those core classes. At this point, we are saying, you know, to maintain a reasonable student to staff ratio. That's what we feel at this point we could take. And again, you know, we do have, at any point, the board has the option or the district has the option to exceed this number, but once we do that, we say, let's say by chance we get eight applicants that want to come in at the 10th grade level, the board could so choose to accept all eight of those, but at that point, once we start, once we accept beyond what we said was our capacity, then at that point, we have to legally accept anybody at that grade level who applies. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we have to make serious considerations.
I'd like to give John and/or Bill a chance to address how we came up with the numbers as well and some of the issues that we face, even if we were to come before the board and ask for additional staff.
Some of it has to do with the number of sections we have too. If you look at the, for example, the sixth grade compared to seventh and eighth grade, we have eight sections at the sixth grade level. If we come forward requesting additional sections, that would create additional openings for enrollment, but that would require additional staffing as well. And then we have to look at the available space to see if we have space to put those additional sections in. And at the high school level, I'll tell you, it's a lot of guesswork. I mean, this is, this is, you know, I'm doing my best with what, what we know right now in terms of enrollment, but there's no way to accurately tell you how many sections we're going to have of any subject next year because it's all driven by student enrollment. It also depends on how much courses they take because not only do you have the required courses, let's say in English, but you also have elective courses and students have freedom of choice once they get to that 12th grade year. And then you get into student enrollment, if you have, let's say, you know, 15 students register for a course, you're going to offer that course. But that's, the course of 15 is going to take down the class average that you see there represented with 25. So that in and of itself isn't necessarily accurate either. It's, it's a best guesstimate in terms of what we think might happen based upon what's happened historically. If we have a class size of, you know, a class that's being offered that has 12 students, do we offer it, do we not offer it? If we have a class of 35, is that one section? Is it, it's more than likely going to be two, which means we have 17 kids in a section. So, but each of those sections occupy as a percentage of the teaching load. And so there's, it's not as clean cut and as easy to do perhaps as it might be and it's not easy in any way to stretch reform at the elementary level nor at the middle school level, but it becomes increasingly complex because the number of choices becomes exponentially greater.
And this report is something that you submit by February 1st to DPI.
We just have to, we don't necessarily have to submit it to DPI, but we have to have record that the board has approved this and this is what we are projecting as our open enrollment spaces.
The other situation that it creates is it's not often that we just have a single request from a family for open enrollment. So if you have a family with four students and we have one grade level closed, that really limits some of the choices that that family has because they don't want to have their kids going to multiple school districts. So it's a lost opportunity for us as well to engage in families in our district when we have situations like this, even when it's just two grade levels closed.
Bill, this is a side note for another discussion, but in terms of the process for student enrollments, I'm.
I'm, I'm very much in support of student self-selection, but I wanna make sure that the, the integration of your recommendations for Kamaudi, for added rigor to many of our students, to parent oversight, as well as our gifted and talented pieces, all fit together. So that we're guiding our students, not just having them select independently their choices, but guiding them toward what we as educators have understood about their passions, about their competencies, so that it's not just them selecting courses and the system organizing to fit them into a course, but to make sure that that course is as appropriate to them as possible, as well as to their parents' approval, et cetera. And it's a totally different conversation, but it, it was on my mind just to check with you.
Well, I can put your ease in a really simple and short response if, if you don't mind. And I think that really comes down to, you know, the, the information that parents have in their hands, the time that our council spends meeting with students and developing individualized learning plans, and also the time that our staff takes, you know, in discussing with students the options that exist within their various courses. So the time our math teachers, you know, take in terms of what will you be looking at taking next year? What are your options? Same thing in science, English, et cetera. So I think from that, that standpoint, you know, that, that is being done already, you know, as we speak. So, and I would expect that will continue to happen, you know, moving forward. And I think we'll, we'll start to see what's gonna, you know, start to shift itself off with regards to, you know, rigor, how many kids are taking Lodi courses, et cetera, as time goes on. But we, we continue to be and will be responsive to, to the schedule, developing a schedule that's driven by student interest. So it's not about you saying we're gonna offer X, X number of sections of something, and that's where we're gonna put the kids. Kids' registrations will dictate how many sections we offer of any specific course, or if the course is even offered at all. So every year that changes in terms, and that's why I can't give you a definitive answer, because every other number of students who wanna take a specific AP language arts class is gonna vary, in whether we offer the class at one section, at two sections. Two years ago, we had one section. Last year, we didn't have any, this year, we have two. It varies depending upon students.
I, I just, I just wanna reiterate it again, that I, I honor and believe that it's important to have the student participate in defining what class they want. But unless the system is organized so that the teacher's recommendations are not just verbally given to the student, but that there's a system that ensures the fact that if the teacher says you should be taking cap one, because you have the capacity, and the student signs up for trig, or something that might for them be less of a challenge, there's a way for us to identify that. And again, as I say, it's much more of a systems and structures kind of thing, so that all of these pieces fit together. But I do believe we have the technology to be able to support that, as well as parent participation. But thank you again for, for the information.
See, Bill, I see on grade nine, you have a hundred and two spaces. Are, are any of those English classes less than fifteen? Okay, for example, in grade nine.
What's projected for grade nine next year?
Yeah, see, you have a hundred and two spaces.
Yeah.
And we rolled a hundred and eighty-eight. Are there classes less than fifteen in English now, or no?
Perhaps on a rare exception, but that would, that's probably based upon, we have, some of those things happen right now during our fifth hour, because that's when we have our lunch hour, and so there's some certain dynamics that we've had to address with regards to our, our three lunches and our split schedule, and that should resolve itself for next year. We won't have that complexity. But really, the numbers you're seeing there are really reflective of a very small current eighth grade class. And the reason why we have lots of space there, but you know, we, we are gonna do everything we can as we build the schedule for next year to make sure that we fill as many seats as possible within the classes, because we need to address staffing issues, we need to address the double dose courses. We're looking at offerings within our multi-tiered systems of supports. So, you know, we're gonna have some other things that we need to do to address with staffing that are gonna fulfill a lot of the, the goals that we have as a district. So I, I would caution you in utilizing average class size at the high school level, because I don't think it really describes what's really going on and what the needs of the students are.
For the questions, Mr. Cummings.
Crystal, maybe you can answer this. What is our projected enrollment? I know we have studies and stuff here, we never write on, but is there any feel about, crystal ball type thing?
Well, we, we had that study, those projections updated last year, and they used three different models, and they were all pretty consistent, and our enrollment is pretty flat anyway now, and projected to be that way for the next five years. So obviously, open enrollment is a part of that, you know, projection.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the open enrollment spaces.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Riley, seconded by Miring. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion carried. Brings us to D, which is listed as selection of the construction manager for phase two of the facility study. Back at the last meeting on the fourteenth, we did a little commentary from each board member as to where they were in the process. The expectation being that tonight, we could choose a construction manager from the three firms that we interviewed, those being CJ Schmidt, Endor, and Lyren. I want to afford the board another opportunity, if anybody has any questions. Not only about any specific firm that they have not had answered, which I hope if you had questions you had asked in previous, but maybe there's a question in regards to how the contract is set up? If anybody has any questions, afford an opportunity for them to be asked.
I'd just like to make a comment, I'd like to commend our staff, and in particular Martha Baldwin, for gathering all of the recommendations, all of the information, and for contacting all of the clients, previous clients these groups have served, and providing that information back to the board. It's been very helpful, thank you.
Any other comment?
Are we gonna just then talk about the various construction managers at this point?
We didn't want to handle it, I offered the board one. If somebody wants to make a motion for a particular firm, I mean, I would comment that, you know, all three of the firms received very good references. There were some differences between them as far as how they were rated in their rating rubric. I would go so far as to say, I, I don't think that we would be wrong in choosing any of them. They all certainly had positive attributes and resumes and references of work that they accomplished for school districts across the state that certainly stood up and commented of their good work. That having been said, based upon the rubric, based upon our previous discussions, we certainly can't entertain a motion for a specific firm. The board's had no discussion amongst ourselves, other than the discussion that we had two weeks ago. So I don't really know where everybody's coming from, but I certainly entertain a motion if they're willing to.
If we want to at least start discussion with a motion, I would move to accept for the contract for construction manager CJ Schmidt.
CJ Schmidt?
CJ Schmidt. I'm really good.
As long as you go over CJ, I'll, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
I didn't know who CJ was.
I'm sorry. Ooh, is that another guy?
Having a motion and a second, discussion?
I, I would agree that all of the firms have been, they're the top tier firms in the state. I do think the selection of any one of them would do our district well. In my assessment of the proposals and in the conversations, I would agree that the nominee, both based on the score and based on their interview, as well as based on their willingness to move forward with us without any preconditions, certainly brought my vote in their favor.
Well, I'll go on a little bit further, yes. I was more in favor of another company, just because of their, just because they're, let's see, the one you, I think it was Comback, and fixed things for years to come, without any problem like that. Sean was talking about the, the insulation at the pool, and I think they came back next year and did it. But I'll, I'll go on a little bit further, yes. I like their, like guarantee a lot better than that fifty others, but whatever.
Well, on that particular point, I was impressed with CJ Schmidt's, or CJ Schmidt's references where one of the school districts said that they, that Schmidt actually still, seven years later, continues to call and check on the building and, you know, the changes or, or building that they did. It did sound to me that they had a very strong feedback and willingness to, you know, to... It didn't say that they actually had come back, but it said that they, seven years later, they're still calling, they're still checking in. And, and that, I thought, made a big, you know, was, was one of their stronger points.
And, and again, I'll also agree that, I mean, I could be all three of these firms, just a temporary, but and I think, and I, I did see some real strengths with, with CJ in the areas of energy savings. And I think as we move forward with this project, we'll obviously use our architect, but this guy, this group will particularly, I think, really add to that. And so I think moving forward, we're definitely gonna be able to see substantial savings through the use of their expertise.
Martha, I have a question in regards to the document that we will enact and sign with the firm in this basic discussion, is CJ Schmidt. What, what sort of timeline is in, or dates are in that document as far as? I mean, if, if we're at a point where we're discussing the potential to renovate your model or build different buildings, which is exactly where we're at, not knowing what we're going to do, there may, the timeline that has been laid out, which was, you look for us to have a plan, and go forth with plans eighteen months from now. If that turns into two years, or two and a half years, or three years down the road, is there an end date to the construction management firm's obligation to us? I don't know how that's set up, do you?
I'm not aware that there is an end date. I believe they're gonna put us through a long, probably, working, yeah.
Okay.
We're not, remember, we're not committed to that timeline. That timeline is something that EUA developed, not the construction manager. So they work hand in hand with the architect. And I know at least one school district, I think it was Columbus, that delayed acting on construction. They're still involved with them. I can't remember if it was Columbus or, or the district. But I guess the point being that it's ultimately the board's decision when you move forward, or if you move forward with the proposals that are going on in this process.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any further questions? Having a motion and a second on the floor for the District Two contract with CJ Schmidt as the construction manager for phase two of our facility study. I would ask that those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Again, thank you to everybody that was involved in the report for doing the, following up on the references. It's appreciated. There is an expectation that we can have CJ Schmidt with us on Thursday for the core planning team's meeting? Okay. And that was not preconceived? I'm saying it wasn't, because I just, just wanna make sure whoever it was, we could have them there.
Yeah.
Brings us to B, which is the district communication plan. I'm going to turn to fellow board member, Mr. Pedro, for that agenda item.
I have a document that I've prepared for the board, which I'll distribute, and I'll just read, just so that we have some information. Over the last two years of my tenure on the board, I've become increasingly concerned with how to formalize the component of our strategic plan that states, quote, "to communicate effectively with our community," unquote. Although I believe we've done a good job communicating with our educational family through letters home, to our parents and guardians, and with those connected to the internet through emails, via announcements and on our website, I believe we could do a much better job communicating with the larger community of Baraboo, West Baraboo, and beyond. Currently, our only means of reaching that larger community is through our audio and visual taped board meetings, played on channel ninety-seven on Charter Communications, and whatever coverage the Baraboo News Republic deems newsworthy. And it is in this area that I believe we can be more proactive. Recently, I've communicated via email with Ben Bromley, Assistant Editor of the Baraboo News Republic, who has assured me that our press releases are welcomed, and they, that, and that they will be published upon receipt. This is a very pleasant change from previous responses, and is encouraging for the district and for the community. However, I still believe that it is our responsibility as a board to ensure that we are communicating what we believe is essential for the community, to have available to them, to keep them informed as citizens, and to fulfill the commitment of our strategic plan. And in that vein, I'd like the board to consider that we purchase a special section in the BNR entitled "News From the Board," to be published at least twice per month that speaks directly to our community on the issues, discussions, challenges, and final votes and decisions this board makes. At this point, I offer this simply as an information piece for further discussion. But as I say, I believe it is imperative on this board to be able to find a venue that community, that communicates directly with the larger community without it being filtered by other interests in the community.
Anybody have any feedback they wanna give, Peter?
I, I don't know whether we, that would be setting a precedent, that good or bad, for paying for input. And obviously, then people would look at that as paid input. It's like, it may all, hopefully, wouldn't be projected as like an advertisement in a way. But one thing is, I, I know that I've talked, and you've obviously had communication with Ben Bromley about, I've recently, about a month or so ago, I had proper communication with their editor. And he did not seem adverse to having us submit op-eds, editorials, or whatever, you know. They have, they can't be massive projects, but he didn't seem adverse to us doing that too. And so we could say, okay, this is a thing that we discuss, like the construction manager is obviously an important item that we discuss tonight, and we could have an article or, or project something. This is the reason that we went through to make that decision to choice. So I don't know if that's, this, you know, whether we just need to find a different way of approaching the public. I think we're approaching that and looking at those things. So I, I think we could, we could also look at those avenues, too.
If it involves spending money, I would probably defer to the finance committee for further discussion.
The finance committee would be happy to take it on.
I think, no, I think it's a great idea. I, I, I think I would like to see us take them up on their offer to present some more information to them at no expense to us, whether that be in the form of a press release or, or sit downs with them. And if, if that process doesn't suit our needs, I think looking at alternatives is, is fine. I do know that there are some real sticking points when you start to spend money to promote what some might consider to be the board's personal agenda, the board's agenda, in particular, if we were to ever get to a point of referendum. That's part of the discussion that we've had with the outside firms, in that, you know, we have to have a arms-length distance from... and that, you know, we have to have a arms-length distance from whatever's being presented from a standpoint of in favor of a referendum. So there could be some sticking points, not that they couldn't be overcome. But I think, I sense what Peter's objective here is for us to find some better ways to communicate through the newspaper. Obviously, there are many other ways for us to communicate, and most of those involve substantial expense beyond what we're already deciding. Would there be additional discussion? Mr. Cummings?
Unfortunately, I can see what Peter's going after there, but unfortunately, why, by the time you report on such issues or different things, it takes so much background to actually understand what you're talking about in issue that it would take up large amounts of space just for people to understand what the, basically, the issue is. We have the luxury of the, I said the board here and the administrators having information on a ongoing basis over the years. So we, we kept, we can keep up on what's going on. Where if you introduce a issue or a discussion or a challenge or a vote or something, people that are reading the newspaper, a lot of times don't understand what's going on.
I, I would agree with all of the comments. I do think that our primary responsibility is to have an informed citizen read. And if we do not inform them, then we allow the communication vehicles in the community to inform them in our place. And the history, at least in the two years in which I have sat on this board, is not accurate. What is communicated to our community is not accurate, and that defines and frames the conversation. I am not willing to allow this board to take another's definition of what it is working for to communicate to our community. And my recommendation that we consider various options for how to communicate directly to our community is our elected responsibility. It's not the responsibility of the Baraboo News Republic. It's our responsibility. And unless we accept the challenge to inform our community of those very issues, Gary, that you raised, which are complex.
Right.
We are failing in our responsibilities. That's, and I don't want anybody else to make judgments like the Baraboo News reporters that may sit on one or two meetings and interview one or two board members and then publish an article in the paper that becomes fact. If anything is gonna become fact, I think it is imperative that it come directly from the board and that is approved by the board and signed by the board to the community that has elected us. That's all I'm trying to do here. And if people watched and paid attention, listened to the audio, that would be one option, but it's not sufficient.
Well, and, and I think you kind of have to do a little bit of both. What I mean by that is that, obviously, I understand, Gary, that, you know, we can't go in there and say, here, here's a ten thousand word dossier and what's going to happen. No, you're busted. You have to read it. But, you know, give them a few rec. cut. We don't be the only ones that's sitting here for.
Ten thousand words? That's Craig.
That's correct. That's no problem. But, you know, yeah, that's a little lawyer's, a lawyer's. But, you know, you can give them a little bit and then give them options of other places where they can get additional information. I think it's just showing that we're trying to be transparent and to say, we're trying to communicate with the public as best as we possibly can, but then giving them other avenues to get additional.
And they do, there certainly are avenues, but the website in particular. But, but, but I understand that Peter mentioned, Peter, I think, phrased this very clearly so that, and argued, you know, relevance as to why, why we, he thinks we should do this. I, I am certainly, I certainly am in agreement overall, although, you know, not only having finance look at it, what does, what does three hundred or two hundred words cost and what does it look like? But I guess I'd also like, if we're going to be spending money on a CM, on a construction manager firm, with a communications specialist working with us, on one matter only, I would at least like to get that person's read on whether they have experience with another district doing this, what kind of, you know, what kind of, what kind of outcome they, other, this kind of thing or other communication mechanisms have had, what, what outcomes, what successes, how were they read by the community, how, you know, how was it perceived? We've got someone who coming aboard soon, who has, you know, real expertise with getting a message out clearly and succinctly, which I think is an issue. So at least let's, let's run it by that person.
Well, I'm sure within that budget for that particular issue in facilities planning, we have to unfold some of the history of why we're even talking about those things. I am just concerned that this board needs to take a more proactive stance in ensuring the fact that our community is getting all of the positive stories, positive achievements, positive feedback that this district has accomplished, at least since I've been on this board. And I believe they're entitled to it. And they're not just relying on a reporter who comes once every two or three board meetings to cover major issues that involve the direction of this district. That's all.
I sense we can have some future discussion.
I just want to broach the subject.
I think it's embellished.
And I appreciate, I appreciate your, your enthusiasm.
My day, no makes a good point, and let's rely on some of the expertise that we will be working with in the area of communications. And although that's specific to our, our facilities, we may learn some things through that to address other areas because we certainly want to communicate on more issues than our facilities.
Sure. Just as we have this thing on GP. We're, we know, and maybe a few people that are watching on TV, but we need to have other people try to get an understanding.
I think Craig was writing an article on it during the presentation.
Was it at least ten thousand words?
No, actually, one of the things we want to do is highlight to staff and students that are recognized that are worthy to have pictures taken and write a group. And that's kind of through the HR, you know, we talked about, that's an important piece to, to recognize those and then submit that to the newspaper, whether or not they, you know, they're qualified to send something out.
Well, they probably would if it's presented correctly or the way that they would feel comfortable.
I would do a comment on that.
You can't. I won't stop you.
Are you entertaining a motion in German?
So moved.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.